Call the Order of Special Meeting for the city of East Grand Forks for November 21st, 2023 is now 5:17. Would City Kirk please call roll?
May I see the other?
Here.
Councilwoman Mark Olson.
Here.
Council Vice President Jim Raypot.
Here.
Councilwoman Martha Schaller.
Here.
And question.
Here.
Dale Helm.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does the turn of the quorum, number one, discussion on the 2024 budget.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I will start. I did present or put together a little bit of a presentation showing on the screen. I didn't send this out in email. So I can, when the meeting is concluded, if any of you want to see anything that's in the slides, I can email that out. And then in addition, Carla also handed out some tax property comparisons with the truth and taxation forms that just came out, and we'll give her an opportunity to kind of chat through that as we go through the presentation. I think the biggest objective tonight, as far as presenting and discussion on the budget, as far as I see it, is there are still a number of moving variables with this budget, even from what was sent out in the packet last week till today, with moving pieces to salary negotiations and getting some of those things with some of the contracts that have tentative agreements in place. The document is still really a living document from a budget perspective. And so some of the numbers that I'm going to go through tonight are going to look a little different than even what was in the packet in the email from last Friday. But to summarize, to set the stage for where we are today and where we have discussed our goals to be, in September, we set a preliminary budget of an 11% tax levy increase. That's shown on the left-hand side of the screen. It's been discussed pretty openly at the council level and with Mayor Gander that we'd like to see that tax levy increase be at 5%. And so you can see kind of where the differences begin. A few assumptions and items that are still open-ended, I did mention contract negotiations. Those are ongoing and with some movement in that document still, I would say we should probably safely plan for an additional $150,000 in expenses that is not shown on the top lines at this point. Current open positions the city has that remain in this budget, the accounting technician and the public works supervisor, those both remain in the budget. The police retention incentive we discussed at the work session last week, if we were to continue that, the July payment that we would owe in 2024 is not included in these numbers either. And then lastly, the school resource officer, which you all know is currently not in the schools, we do not have a contract with the school district, that revenue has been removed from this budget. So if there was a time or an opportunity for us to get the SRO back in the school, we could assume some revenue to go along with that. That represents over the course of the entire year, $83,000. As we look at the next page comparing the two budget options, really, I think the thing to call out on this one is just what the fund balances would look like with each option. We're estimating that on an 11% increase, we would have been at a 47% fund balance. Remember, the goal that the League of Minnesota Cities explains to us is we should shoot for a fund balance anywhere from 35% to 50% of our annual expenditures. On the 5% side, it would be reduced down to 44%. A few of the moving parts still, both in revenues and in expenses. On the revenue side, the water and light franchise fee is one item that the city has not looked at an increase in since 2016, the last time it was increased. That is, it does kind of represent an additional tax. If we would look to raise that franchise fee, it's essentially another tax on the water and light bill that comes back to the city. In the budget for 2024, with no increase proposed, that represents about 1.3 million in revenue. The other item that we did recognize is the XL Energy franchise fee. That, I don't know total background, Carla and I believe we don't have a lot of control over what XL Energy pays us. We didn't get a lot of research done on that. But what we did find in how we set the franchise fee, but in what we did find is we budgeted for $85,000 in 2023 and have planned 100 in 2024. In our 2022 collection, it was $180,000. That was a jump of about $80,000, $90,000 from 2021. And we all recognize, we all saw pretty significant increases in our natural gas fees that correlate to that some. I'm sure some is weather dependent, if it was a colder season and there was more consumption of natural gas. But I think as we look at this budget, that is paid on an annual basis. February of 2024, we should receive our 2023 payment. So we don't have a lot of information to make a really educated decision at this point, but I think we could consider increasing our anticipated revenue on that to some level and still feel conservative about what that revenue expectation is. The school resource officer, I did touch on that. That, over the course of the year, would be $83,000. And then there's a couple other smaller level program fees on the revenue side, we did look at, and it's shown in the budget that was sent out to you, the park and rec program fees, a plan for increase in those is accounted for in the budget. You all did, a couple of months ago, approve raising the building permit and the excavation fees. That number, an anticipated increase of $8,500, is not shown in the document that was emailed out. But I do show it at the end of this presentation what that would bring in again. And then on the expenditure side, these are smaller items, but I think worthwhile for discussion. There is potential for a few reductions in the small tools and equipment items. We're talking $1,000 or $2,000 by line item. So we're not going to completely fix our budget with that, but it's worth noting. And then utilities, a lot of the utilities across each department were left pretty flat from 2023. And so now that we know what Water and Light has set its rates at, and we're still seeking some information on what XL Energy's rates for next year will be, but that may be one that we need to plan to adjust nominally even going forward before we would set a final budget for the city. And then I skipped over the elections. I would like Megan to just chat with you a little bit from an election standpoint. There's been a lot of movement at the national and state level about requirements for absentee voting. And so she wants to just give an update on what that could look like, both in '24 and beyond.
Okay, thank you. We started with absentee voting in the city in 2018. 2023, as he said, the state made a lot of changes. Not, and it's, we've been going back and forth, not all of the changes now will take effect for 2024. In 2024, we're going to have the presidential primary in March, the primary in August, and then the general election in November. The state has started to recognize they're going to have to help cities with funding for elections because it is a mandatory thing. Right now, they have set up a permanent fund, but they only put about $1.2 million in it. 20% will be, of that funding will be split evenly amongst the counties, and then 80% will be based on the number of voters for each county. So obviously, more populated counties will be getting more funding out of that. But I do believe we should be getting reimbursed for our costs for the presidential primary. So the state will cover all of those costs, or should cover most of those costs. I have been waiting to kind of bring some of this before you until I had a few more questions answered. Starting in 2026, 18 days prior to Election Day, we'll have to start, and I know there's a lot of terms that float around and seem interchangeable, but 18 days would be direct balloting or balloting with machines. That means I would have to have people here from the start of the day to the end of the day and running machines, not saying we would have totals each night. But just the cost of that alone right now, how we have been running absentee voting, and we pull in judges, the closer we run it with staff, and then we pull in judges, the closer we get to Election Days, obviously primaries, we get a little bit closer to Election Day before we start pulling in judges. But right now, we spend about $4,000 on absentee balloting, or absentee voting for our people. Every single year, I've seen more and more people. I think it's a service that they enjoy. In 2026, that jumps to over $12,000 just for absentee voting. That does not include anything else. So I don't know if that's something that we can sustain going forward. One thing that will be going into effect in 2024 is additional hours. So the county, I was told by the county, and this may change, but right now, they want all three elections to be the same, where all the additional hours will be the exact same. Right now, the general election, we would have to be open two Saturdays before, from 9:00 to 3:00, instead of 10:00 to 3:00, like we have in the past. The Tuesday, the week before Election Day, we have to be open until 7:00 PM. And then the weekend before, we always open that Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00, but now it's 9:00 to 3:00, and Sunday from 9:00 to 3:00. So right now, they're only requiring that for the general election. So without including those hours for the other ones, we would increase our budget for absentee voting to about 5,000. If we wanted to try and keep them all looking the same, it would be about 6100. So, and I guess right now, this is something that the county will need to know next week, if we want to continue being absentee, an absentee location. So really, it's up to you guys on if this is something that we should continue this year, since we can kind of keep our costs in check and the fact that it's a presidential year, and people have gotten used to us being an absentee location. As much stress as it brings me, I would say, you know, it wouldn't be the end of the world if we continued through this year, but we would really have to reconsider in 2026 because the costs would really be going way, way up. And honestly, I don't know if I could get enough people because but having enough people 18 days prior to an election, working all those hours, and then Election Day is typically about a 16-hour day, I think I would have a lot of election judges quitting on me. That's just getting to be way too much. So, but this is something you guys can think about, consider if we want to cut absentee voting. It's definitely, you know, we can get the word out, we can talk about it at almost every meeting and let people know what they can do. I can have a computer upstairs, they can file whatever it is, and I know you guys have a lot to discuss. But if that's something we could cut, that would be about a $4,000 to $5,000 savings depending on hours. So if you guys have questions, you can let me know, but otherwise, let Reed continue.
Thank you, Megan. So just to summarize that, if we did plan to keep absentee voting open as we have, we have that budgeted. That expense is budgeted in this budget. But if we wanted to change how we have done absentee, we could find some savings of $4,000 to $5,000. Okay, the next item to touch on, as it pertains to the budget, this year, or the last legislative session, the legislature approved a public safety aid account. The city is going to receive $398,000, 398,427. That's one-time funding that the state has allocated to East Grand Forks to be used for public safety aid. There are some restrictions and requirements on how it's used, but the list that's included here is all within the approved realm. As I met with Chief Bushy and Chief Headland on this, as Carla and I met with them, we really wanted to try to focus this discussion around items that we would regularly need to fund through our capital improvement plan, or items that have been on our wish list for a long time that we just have not been able to even request because we haven't had funding for it. So items include updating our early warning sirens around town. That item, Chief Bushy's original price was around $130,000, and that did include adding a new additional siren on Fire Station 1 to touch the downtown area. That's been recognized as kind of a gap in our siren service right now. In some of the moving parts of this budget discussion, I have asked him, and he's agreed, to touch base with the contractor to see if we could repurpose one of our existing sirens from a different location to Station 1 and potentially find some savings. So that's where I'm hoping we would be able to find $15,000 in savings on that item. The radio replacements for fire and police have been in the CIP for a few years planned, and we'd be able to take care of those rather than spreading out over multiple years, be able to take care of it all at once with this public safety aid. Ballistic gear and rifle-proof vests for both the fire and police officers have been wish list items that we just haven't been able or made the priority to fund. So I think those would be important for us, too. And then the last item on the list is the, that July police retention bonus that we've, we discussed at the work session last week. If there was a desire from the council to continue to fund that program, this could be an area that we could carve out some available funding to be able to cover that. And bottom line, you see, there's $9,073 remaining that would need to be covered out of the general fund. The capital improvement plan, these are the items in our capital improvement plan for next year that are general fund related. As you look at the list, the top seven or eight are all regular payments that we've used our financing fund to purchase, and they're being paid back over a multi-year plan. So those are all locked in, restricted that we will need to continue those. As I look at this list, the items that could be for discussion, for movement or removal for a future year, would basically be starting at the Police Department mobile data computers at $35,000 and down. That item, the $35,000, and talking to Chief Headland and with our IT, it's really those laptops are at a place that they need to be updated from a, just totaled their years of service. And so I would not recommend removing that. Chief Headland and I have discussed the two new police SUVs that are in the budget for '24. And then the yellow items below correlate to that. We did order one SUV in 2023 that has not delivered yet. We're expecting delivery either still late this year or early next. And so with that, the fact that that will deliver sometime soon, Chief Headland was comfortable in moving one of the SUVs out to 2025. So we would essentially still have two new ones next year, one that's already been ordered and ideally one that we would order in '24. And then the Parks truck that's budgeted for $60,000, that item also has already been ordered in '23. It was budgeted in '23 at $50,000. And just through the backlog and supply issues with motor vehicle manufacturers, it wasn't able to be fulfilled. So it's in the list, and we sure hope that we would get that in '24. So total savings out of this list, really, that's available for us is, I would say, $62,500 would be great. And at most, it would be the $125,000 if we really had to push that number. The Building Maintenance Fund, this was discussed a little bit at our work session last week as well. The first thing I would call attention to is in the 2024 list on the left, we discussed the city hall roof, and that those prices were going to come back probably twice as much as what we had initially budgeted. We do have a fund balance in the ARPA dollars, it's American Rescue Plan dollars. When those first came in, we've used them minimally for replacement of lead service lines through water and light. And outside of that, they were kind of earmarked for recreation projects. Whenever we get to the point of improving our arenas, they could help supplement whatever other funding could come through sales tax and other sources. The difficulty with that is that the most important items, the biggest need in the recreation world, all have a much larger expense than $700,000. We're talking a couple million for an ice plant, or a million plus for a roof on a building. And so as I met with staff last week about how to afford the city hall roof, this is one area I think that makes a lot of sense, is we could use these American Rescue Plan dollars for that purpose. It provides a benefit to the fact that the American Rescue Plan dollars, they have a date, they want them at least encumbered by June 30th of next year. And so I think if we can show really strong action that we have a plan to use them and get them spent, the sooner the better. I think that's good for everybody. It seems like every year, the federal level in the recent year has talked about their potential federal default and shutdown of the federal government. They've talked about potentially pulling back all these ARPA funds that are unused. So I think that the sooner we have a plan to how to spend them, the better it will be for our community. And that'd be my recommendation, is that we would use those to cover the cost of the city hall roof. We did include $750,000 in that number. Nancy is still waiting for some updated information from an actual contractor. We're hopeful that that would come back more in the $575,000 to $600,000 range. But that, I think $750 is a good place for us to start a safe approach to that at this point. And then I did show with those updates, over the course of the next four years, how we would be able to use the $350,000 payment we get from Water and Light annually, to be able to budget for the Fire Station 2 improvements that we discussed last week. And you can see that that still leaves our account at the end of each calendar year in a deficit, but it's a lot better looking than it was a week ago. And it at least gives us a little bit of wiggle room to have a conversation about what that could look like. Just to touch on a couple of the projects, larger projects, these are not necessarily general fund related, but larger projects that are on the docket for next year. The LeFave Park project, we have received official word from Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails that they will fund our most recent application. So the total funding we're going to receive from Greater Minnesota is that bottom line, 1.75 million. And then our local match responsibility would be $468,692. And so the way that I would recommend we would fund that project is, starting the first piece would be remaining sales tax funds from the swimming pool. That account currently has $359,880 in it. And we would spend about $305,000 of that towards the LeFave Park project with your approval. And then the other items, the Building Maintenance Fund on the last page we showed, were our match of the picnic shelter that's included in that project could come out of Building Maintenance. And there's a nominal amount out of stormwater funds for the areas where the catch basins are being replaced along that street. And then finally, the overlay and rehab of First Street itself could be used, we could use street maintenance funds for those. So all total, that would be the way we would break apart our match responsibility for LeFave Park. The second half of this page is the Quiet Zone project. This number is still a little bit of a target, a moving target for us. Mr. Emery is working on updating some totals on that project with the hope that we'll be able to bring that total cost down some. When you all saw this project estimate in front of you probably a year and a half ago, it was probably half this amount. It has risen some due to the cost of goods. It's risen some as Steve and Jason put an official plan together, ready to go out to bid. It added some scope to street improvements along that corridor, that as long as we're there doing the Quiet Zone, we ought to look at the street at the same time. But I just wanted to get that in front of you. In the next couple of weeks, I would expect that Widdsett will have more firm numbers to bring back, and we could, at that time, recommend how we would pay for those items. And then the last, this is kind of the final big project we have planned for next year. You've all given approval for the plans and specs to be put together on this, is the sidewalk and multi-use trails in the Sherlock Park area, and then the breakdown of how we would fund that. The MINDOT Carbon Reduction Grant would pay for a portion of it. There is potential that they will cover up to $55,000. We're waiting on an answer from them. If we can use the 2025 grant award for this project in 2024, if they approve that, that would bring our local share down by $20,000. Okay, so then the final page is kind of where we're at on the general fund, our bottom Where we started when we sent the packet out last week was $409,950. I touched on, if we want to include that police retention, there's a share that we would need to plan general funds to cover. And then I touched on the wages and health insurance per our contract negotiations that are ongoing. So leaving our total at a 5% goal, 5% levy increase, our total deficit, $569,023. A few potential revenue increases that I've touched on, the SRO, if we had that in place for the entire year, that'd be $83,000. The building permits, which you've already approved, will be added in at $8,500. Potential savings on expenditures, I've recommended the removal of one police SUV at $62,500. The public works position that's open to touch on that, that is the public works supervisor position. Jason and I and Jeremy have had a lot of really good discussion on kind of the future of the public work staffing and how that could look, and if there's any potential to rework or restructure the current positions we have in place that may allow that position to remain unfilled. Jason's not here tonight to be able to speak about it, but I do think that there's potential that we could accomplish that. We do have some changes to job descriptions out to David Drow and Associates for review to come back to us. So I do think there's potential that we'd be comfortable, at least for next year, moving forward with that position remaining unfilled. The accounting position, I didn't list that on this spreadsheet. I didn't list it because I would, with what I've learned in my time in the administration office and the amount of work that's on our current staff, I will be recommending that we advertise to hire that position again in the near future. That comes at a cost of $86,000 if we're going to have that discussion. But that would be my feeling at this point, is that that will be necessary for us to fill with the changes in the human resources law and the accounting side of the new laws and requirements the state of Minnesota put in place the last legislative session. I do feel that will be important. And then the general fund reserves, a couple of items. That Parks truck that was budgeted for this year, 2023, it is already ordered. We have that in the budget for next year at $60,000, but it will show our reserves at a surplus of 50 at the end of 2023. So we can essentially look at that as a carryover of our reserve balance. And then the last item, you've all approved this, the transfer of Fund 681 to the general fund. That total was $73,000. That item, of course, is up for discussion of how we use that. Do we leave that in the general fund as an extra slush fund with our reserves, or do we look to use it to help with our budget deficit for 2024? So if all of those things were, came to fruition, and we could count on all of them for either budget savings or revenue increases, we would still be at a budget deficit of $197,915. So at this point, that's where I would, I would say that I'd be looking for any comments or direction from any of you on items that piqued your interest through all of this discussion tonight, or any areas that we should look next for savings.
Anything right away? First, I would thank Reed and the staff for putting this together. I know we've been working hard at it and looking at it. At this time, I might have something to say in a little bit, but Sam, else have anything?
Reed, something you and I have spoken of outside of here. As I look at the normal budget sheet that we're all familiar with looking at, we have all the line items for revenue, including property tax levy, franchise and other taxes, license and permits, intergovernmental, and so on. I would hope that, to the extent that we can, that we would find a way to index those revenue sources to inflation over time. I know in the past, some of those have sat at a certain fixed number for five, six, seven, eight years, and then we say, wait a minute, we haven't adjusted that number for inflation for that period of time. So I would wonder, first of all, how many of those are currently sort of riding with inflation? And which of those might we have opportunity to then index to inflation year over year so that even as we, you know, if those are fixed, for example, if LGA is somewhat fixed, if we're going to keep up with a 3%, 4%, 5% inflation, an inordinate amount of that is going to hit our tax levy, right? If a lot of our revenues are flat, and expenses, the total of them are going up at 3% or 4% or 5%, we're going to make it all up in the tax levy, that's going to have to go up more to offset those that are not going up with inflation. So question then is, how many of those would you say are riding with inflation? I know that's, I'm throwing a lot on you there. And then of that, how many could we possibly go back and revise those so that they do ride with inflation?
Okay, well, that's a great question. The way we establish our fees for services, none of them are specifically tied to an inflation index where they're going to just automatically increase year after year based on inflation. That said, in the proposal for this year, really, the fees that we have the most immediate control over amongst staff is the building permits, the excavation permits, the park and rec programming fees, the rental agreements. And those are all seeing increases next year already. So then the remaining items that I would look at would be, and this one is nominal, but it is licensing fees. items that I would look at would be, and this one is nominal, but it is licensing fees, permits and license through our administration office. A lot of those are very small nominal fees that have not been adjusted in many, many years. And then it would be the franchise fees that we touched on earlier. Those, that I think is probably the biggest, when we talk about potential adjustments based on inflation that we could look at would be that, the franchise fee. You touched on LGA, that's somewhat out of our control. The, and I think as far as my mind is right now, that's where the most of our control lies.
Intergovernmental, we have really no control, because those are either fire aid, police aid, which is all set by the state, LGA. So those are areas where we're really not able to, we, you know, we looked at the charges for service, we looked at parking rec, which is most of that. Fines and forfeitures, we really have no control over that. You know, we get so much from the court fees every month, so that's really not an area. So as, you know, Reed said, that main area that he talked about is really the only place that we could actually look at any kind of inflation. And we actually would have to take a little more work to see if we are able to even adjust some of those franchise fees if they are set by the industry. So, you know, NXP, NSP is Excel, which is Northern State Power, and then cable is MidCo.
And I know outside of the general fund budgeting effort, that $350,000 from Water and Light for the building fund has been flat for a while. And I know that would not hit the general fund, and I wouldn't ask Water and Light to do it for 1-1 of, let's say, '24. That would be too abrupt for their own internal budgeting. But I think we should look ahead on that building fund amount and watch that go up with inflation little by little, maybe starting, say, a year from now, so that they can build in and plan ahead for it.
Thank you. A couple things. I go back to our finance committee, and they had a number of things that we could look at. One that stands out with me is if we sell our senior center, the $120,000 that we'd budgeted for the HVAC system, that would go away. So I would propose that we put the senior center immediately up for sale, and then look at the programming between the senior center and the library and see what kind of cost savings we can get in there, either eliminating a librarian or someone on the senior citizen side, but combining those programs and coming up with better programming for both the library and our senior citizens. That'd be my first thing. The second thing is I disagree with the mayor that $350,000 coming over from Water and Light shouldn't be coming over at all. That should be eliminated. We should be building those into our own general fund budget, and Water and Light should be decreasing their fees to not have to pay that to us, because I don't think that's a Water and Light responsibility. Thank you.
Except by the city charter, it's called out right in there that it's part of our Water, Light, and Building.
But if you read the charter, it's only the buildings that we've turned over to Water and Light, and we haven't turned any buildings over to Water and Light.
This is kind of a way of doing that in terms of them paying the maintenance cost.
I disagree.
One of the things that I look at, you know, if you look at what the rest of the reserves are right now, as of today, and I struggle that if we even use any of that this year at all, because it's not a long-term fix, we need to look at the fixes that are going to be year after year after year going forward. You know, we depleted our reserves by 7% already this year because of the sick leave accrual that we had to pay, which was not planned for. And knowing that, and bringing it down to 44%, and then maybe potentially looking at using some of that this year, I just, I don't think that's going to be possible. I'm getting to that uncomfortable stage of getting down close to that 40%, it's going to be tough, and we turn around and try to build it back up. I think what you have presented, and I'm hoping that we can get to an agreement with the resource officer soon, so we can get it back starting next semester, school year. And I appreciate the department heads looking at removing the vehicle. Chief Edlin, appreciate that. And then reworking the public works area. I mean, I don't know where else 197 is going to come from, but I'm not sure if we can get down to zero without doing something. Or, you know, I know the mayor wants to be at the 5%. I understand his reasoning. It's going to be, it's going to be difficult. I mean, you look at 197, and each percent is 66 grand. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. I mean, it's three, over 3%. It's 3% roughly. So, Mr. Larson, you have something there?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. To the topic of the open position for the account tech, and with all the respect I can provide to Ms. Anderson and Mr. Hutton as well about the extra work that everyone is carrying by not filling that position, I feel like at the very foundational level, if we have an open position and we have budget challenges like this, it feels like we've got two choices there. There's an FTE position that we could cut that is not filled, or the other option is to look at filled positions and potentially eliminating them. And I can't get past the opportunity to eliminate a position that's not currently filled. And so I would strongly be in favor of closing that position for now, looking at how those responsibilities would be reallocated, continuing to have that conversation with staff. But when compared to eliminating a filled position, I don't know how we could not take that opportunity. Thank you.
Reed, I mean, I'm assuming you're looking for direction from us tonight. And I know that the department heads gave you some direction of what they can do. I'm assuming that you're going to continue to work on that 197 number, figure out how we can get down. We do have a little time, but not a lot.
Mr. Vedder, you have something again?
Sorry there. I didn't, I've just got a few other thoughts. Just from some notes I was taking, Reed, this is fairly small, but looking at the planned expenditures for the one-time funding for the public safety, where we were over budget by $9,000 or so, I'd recommend we just get to zero. Find a way to not overrun that account, balance that out. I feel like that's a win. And then I'd like to hear more about Mr. Vedder's comment about the planned HVAC improvements in the senior center. You know, what does that scenario look like if we defer that work with a plan to move out of that building, either in one year or a few years? I don't think we'll see a return on the dollars if we do invest $120,000 or so into that system, and then we plan to transition out to another city-owned property.
In regards to the senior center aspect of it, where there's been extensive conversations with the senior center and with us on that committee, my one concern with maybe relocating them to shared space with, say, the Library Arts Center. I would like to use the analogy of putting somebody who has a medical background in a construction company, right? They have two completely different personalities, they have two completely different demographics, and I'm really hesitant that you will hurt a specific population. The senior center, now granted, maybe there isn't a significant number of members of that currently. They are a really close-knit group, and they are an important part of our community, and I would hate to see them suffer because of this, where we couldn't expand our thought processes on how to make that program more profitable, or reallocate some of those job duties of that senior center programmer also. It's not maybe a huge savings, maybe not the full $100,000 savings in that salaried position, but even if you could cut that in half by reallocating some of those duties.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
I hope it's okay with everyone in the room that, between meetings, and I hope you all know, up to now, there've been some pretty extensive conversations with Mr. Hutton, and he's close conversation also with Carla, and Compt. President Olsted, and myself. And we'll just keep hammering away to try to find savings. And of course, everyone's welcome to that conversation. If you have any thoughts, anything in between meetings, talk to Mr. Hutton about it. He won't take any action, of course. You know, I, as mayor, don't have singular authority to do anything without the consensus of this group. So it's all in the interest of brainstorming then to be brought back into a document like this for us to all then come back together and consider. But please know, between meetings, a lot is happening at the staff level, a lot is happening with Mr. Olsted, myself. And by all means, any ideas you have, feel free to share them with Mr. Hutton, and he'll some way incorporate those into the grand picture for our consideration. And again, a lot happens between meetings, just be assured of that.
Anybody else have anything then? Reed's going to continue to work with everyone, and then we'll keep hammering away.
Sounds great.
Anybody else have anything then? Carla?
Yeah, I just want to explain the little sheet that I sent out so we don't forget it. So you're looking at it like, what is this?
This sheet is ugly.
Well, no, it's actually not as bad as it looks. It's just, there's a lot of numbers. So what we've done in the past is we've taken, actually, there's five properties now, just because I try to take properties that are a little bit different in value, so that if you look on Home 1 and you go to 2024 under the proposed column, the tax value is $216,700, and then it's kind of trying to go to like $50,000 after that. So trying to get kind of a perspective of what our home values are in East Ground Forks, and what the property levy would actually do to your property. I know people got their statements, and they saw that 11%, so that's what I took. So in the next column, it says goal, is that 5%. So what I did was, from what it was at 11%, I guesstimated what would it be, the property tax would be with that 5%. And in the last column, under the differences, the difference is, the first line in the yellow, is how the property value, taxable property value, went up. Some of the homes here in 1, 2, and 3 actually have homestead credits, but I only took the taxable value. So the value of the home, if they were to sell it, is a little higher, but they do get that homestead credit. And in the next column, that shows a percentage. And then in the, what's kind of orange or rust, that first one is 247. That's a difference in 2023's city taxes and 2024 at 11%. So you could look at that, for Home 1, the increase for the city tax would be $247, and at 5% that would go down over half of the amount. So Home 1 would only see, would see the increase about $120 on their city taxes. And then that would be the same for each different home property. And then I, there's a commercial one that we picked for the last few years, and you can see that the property value on that also went up $21,100. The city tax would be $340 at the 11%, so that would be about half of the increase in that. And then in the blue, under the goal, it actually shows what the actual increase would be. And so, you know, we always talk about, just because we're doing a 5% levy, that doesn't mean your home levy will go up 5%. And because of the moving parts on how the value of your home went up, which actually also includes the little rate. So as you can see, a 5% levy increase, if you look on the bottom, is actually averages about an 8% increase to the taxpayer. And that just all depends on how the pie is cut and shuffled, so, and how your home value went up or down, if you made improvements.
Sales.
Yeah, and yes, and yeah. If your neighborhood had recent sales, and we know that homes in 1, 2, and 3 are having the most, usually the most sales. And so, if you look at property Home 1, in 2019, it was $164,000. Now in 2024, it's $216,700 in just, you know, those five years. Or, yeah, six, five or six years. So, questions, comments? Exactly. But you know, the hard thing is, everybody, everybody likes to sell their house more, but nobody wants to pay more in tax when your neighbor sells. So it's just really a hard thing there.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
All the favor say hi. Same sign.